Well, why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to request? Okay, well, seeing none of them, then I think we are ready for, yes.
Did the board get the email that I sent earlier about the two budgets?
Yes. So you're suggesting those are additions to the consent agenda, I mean. Okay. So do we need a motion to to accept those? I mean, seems like probably so, just because.
When we get to the consent agenda.
When we get to the consent agenda, I think we can add some items and subtract some items.
Good, so that's what we'll do, add them and.
And I can talk about what they're for, if you want.
Perfect.
If not, then it's fine too.
Good, so then we're ready for our first session of public comments.
All right, so we only have a digital audience right now, so I will explain the rules really quickly as the policy hopefully comes up on the screen. If you'd like to make a public comment, please do so by raising your hand online. You can do that by using the hand raise feature at the bottom of whatever screen you're on. Then I can actually acknowledge you and I can put you, pat you into the room, use your first name, last name, and town of residence, and while we're waiting for people to potentially queue up, I'll work on getting that policy up on the screen.
Okay. So we'll leave this open for a couple of minutes if somebody does raise their hand. But in the meantime, I think we can probably get started with our student representative report, and Maddie, thank you for being here.
Um, there hasn't been any like changes that I've noticed or any other issues that have brought to my attention. The only occurring problem that I've had students talk to me about and that I've experienced personally is issues with the parking lot because we don't have numbered spaces. And even though we do have parking passes, I don't know if it's like well maintained because I know there are people that are parking in the parking spot that don't have a parking pass and it becomes an issue for students that do. Like if you leave during your senior block, you can never get a parking spot. And if you come in late, if you have your senior block first and you come in late, I've had people who have had to circle around the parking lot just to get a parking spot, which is weird because they have a parking pass and it's really frustrating to those who have paid for a parking pass, but we can't get a spot.
Yeah, thank you for that update.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Yeah. Those are the kind of things that always come up and we need to say, who can we blame?
If I get here at seven forty-five, I have to drive around and around. I know, I know that if I want something near closer to my office than I come at a very specific time, and if I miss that by five minutes, then I go around the other way, which is fine anyway, I like coming through the other side of the door, but I, you know. I also have three other parking spaces in other parts, so sometimes it's just nice to have a really long walk.
Yeah. Not if you're a student and you're late for class.
Yes. Right. Right, and did you enjoy your break, your holiday break?
It was really nice to have a break from school, but I'm glad to be back now.
Yeah, good, good. It's nice out a few mornings when you don't have to get up. Yeah, well, great, thank you for being here with us. Does anybody have any questions for Maddie? No? Okay.
Just a quick question, you're a senior, right? Are you planning to go to college?
Yep.
Have you encountered the new financial aid form?
Um, I haven't yet because there's been so many problems that I heard to just, it's better to wait instead of get frustrated now and have it not be sent in yet.
Even in the meeting that we went to, they told us, just wait, let them work out the kids, don't go till like February, they even said.
Cause they're doing a soft launch now and not the whole thing, and it gets really confusing.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, it took us, once I got on, it took fifteen minutes to fill out the form, just so you know.
That's good.
To go through it?
Yeah.
That's it?
Twenty questions.
And you were done?
The last spot?
Isn't it always easy? I do it every year and it's always easy, it takes like ten minutes. What's new about it?
Whatever.
They automatically pull in your information for my access.
I've never done it, I'm doing it, my kid's a senior, I've been told horror stories about it, I don't know.
Kids are stressing out about it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Okay.
Okay.
So you do this every year?
So I'm finishing my masters now and then I'll move on to something after this, but I haven't done this one because I haven't got accepted to my next program. But yeah, every year before that, I've never had any issues.
It is, it's new this year, they redid a lot.
Yeah, see, if there's something new about it, it might be.
It is, they revamped the whole thing, I believe, and so like you said, they did like soft opening and they're like, just let them work out the kids and do it later, because they said it will just be confusing for a little while. I don't know.
I resent my easy.
It's kind of an important topic because we have many students who, that may be the first ones in their family to apply.
I think a lot of it is for, when I first did it, I was already old enough, I didn't have to worry about my parents' information. That's where a lot of students might have issues, because I know when I was younger, around the age that the parents' information was an issue.
Yeah.
That might be the difference, sort of me.
And there are some parents who are just not used to filling out those kinds.
I knew people that didn't, never did their taxes, parents that don't do their taxes, and that made, had an issue with people
Right.
doing it.
Right.
Yeah.
And so it's always nice to find somebody who doesn't just, as a matter of course, who doesn't think twice about it, but trying to get all of our students up to where they can do that, you know. So it's kind of a burden. I recall when our students were in college, our sons, they're talking with some of my, some of my friends, they really didn't have a clue. And they said, well, we didn't fill out the paperwork because, you know, they had some reason, the reason didn't didn't really make a lot of sense, but. Interesting.
Money's there.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Okay, well, again, thank you for being here, Maddie. And then I guess we're ready for our superintendent's report.
Okay, I've been asked to keep it brief, and Maddie's going off to the first, well, back to the game, which is the first thing that I'm going to be talking about, so thank you, have a good time with the game, so Maddie. Okay, we're gonna have a play-by-play update. If you want to go on to our YouTube page as this is going on, you can watch the game and keep updated for all those who are in attendance tonight. Uh, the, but with that, Maddie's going to be on, she's on the stage, she's with the pep band that is up there, a pretty good sized crew. They played last Friday with the girls' team when they played Mascoma here, the guys played at Mascoma, did end up winning and continued to be undefeated as a result, they won by one point. I guess it was a pretty exciting end to that game. The girls' team here played, it was, I came and saw the last part, maybe quarter and a half of the game. It was really a nice energy, a lot of, a lot of interesting calls, I would say, from the refs, I don't know if that was the entire game, but okay, it was fine. Yeah, so it was interesting, I guess they overcame some, some issues and just played really well, but in addition to the, our learners playing really well and competing on the court, we also had our cheer team there, which over the last year and a half, two years, we were, you know, cheering for all of the varsity teams, which is really great, and I'm excited about that, and that really gets them the opportunity to showcase. They were really loud in a good way and, and leading that crew, the energy in the audience was really nice, along with a pep band, so much so, one, you've, I got the feeling of, wow, this is, this is like school spirit, this is inclusivity, this is us coming together and being one for the purpose of that, you know, having everyone involved in their own way in competing here. And I went home, didn't think much of it, I got a text that night from Heather, Heather indicating to me that she was approached by a parent from the Mascoma team, or I guess had a senior on the team from Mascoma, and indicated what a nice environment it was, and specifically talked about all those elements of the event, and I thought that was really great that someone from another location recognized the feel and what was very good about the, the setting and the work that's being done. Uh, so she's going, the boys are playing a game, I guess, against Campbell right now, and so they're playing up there, and that's again, a nice way to, for everyone to participate on a regular basis. So another thing that took place, obviously, we had the holiday season, I hope everyone's holiday was great. After the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, I spent a lot of time with one or two other people, members of the faculty, the high school faculty, working on a CTE application to finish that up. As we know, it was to be done by January first, we ran into a few bumps, we were able to jump those hurdles and get everything in on the thirty-first. And then also, we mailed a hard copy on the first, which we have notification that it was received. And I gotta give a shout out to Kim Baker for all the work that she did over that holiday break to get it really, get it, get it fine tuned. We did a lot of research, obviously, working with the Barker and Ashley McGraw Architects as well to make some changes. We, you know, put some different, we changed a lot of the, little, some elements of the documents included our district news that we just put out there, along with the previous one that we had put out there, showing a progression of communication about CTE, the importance thereof, and also what the newest versions of the drawings are and so forth, and then uh, yeah, submitted it, and we'll, I guess what we'll do is we'll wait and hear for the next steps. Our understanding is that we will hear back from the Department of Education with some feedback, and then we'll get into some conversations and discussions with them. Specifically, the email that I received indicated that we would hear back once the commissioner had an opportunity to review all the applications, or at least our application. Messenic in Region fourteen, Messenic did put its application in, Conville put its application in, and Conan put its application in. And so there are some differences with all of them, and there's some continuity as well with the three. Um, another example of, I think, inclusivity, we've talked about this for really a couple of years, and of course, we had some controversy last year when we started to have much larger, like B teams in the middle school, boys' B team, the girls' B team. And I was able to last Thursday, see a portion of the boys' B team over at RMS. And one, they greatly improved their skill sets, it's, they're so much better, but it was really neat to see their new uniforms. And so this is the first time that um, they didn't have Cardinals, they were Conan, straight across their chest, they have the Oriole on there. They were kind of slick, black shirts. I'm assuming that other teams have received those as well.
Everyone has.
Everyone has them, so there is this idea that regardless of your level, where you're at, you are part of this school, you're part of this movement, you're part of Conan. And we started earlier, now, we even have some cool Conan onesies for the the little real center, and there's a couple of them that have been, they can order, I mean, we didn't order them for them, but they, they ordered them from the store, and so they come in with the little black onesies with the bird across their chest and everything, so it's cool. It's neat, so we started early, and I think that's, that's really neat that we've been able to do that. Uh, the last bit of information, obviously, this Thursday, we'll be meeting again and having conversations more about some budgets and talking to the community about that. The twenty-third, that's the day that we have the primary vote, and so it's a professional development day for the teachers and, well, for all the staff for that matter. And so just at the elementary school, they're going to be focusing on assessment and data around universal screening and progress monitoring with Ames Web, just to strengthen that, and then the sixth through twelve is going to do the first part of their day, they're gonna work on curriculum all day, but the first part of the day will be six through twelve, working together in those curricular areas. And that's my summary for what's happening.
Excellent.
That was fun. Yeah, that's great.
Quicker than usual, yeah.
Uh, do we have questions? Does anybody have any questions for Ruben about?
We also had like two weeks of no classes. For part of that time, so.
Okay. Well, Ruben, thank you, it sounds like it's been a busy times, even over the holidays, and some very positive reports, so. It's great to hear about the athletics and the activities that are going on and and how those are including more of our learners and.
It's neat to see them weaving together with one another and feeling like they're part of, like their community, so when you think of the three circles of communication, collaboration, community, that community feel is really nice.
Yeah, I will say, right, we talked about the B team, but there's so many other clubs and activities, right, that you know, obviously we know people that don't go to school, you know, in this, in this district, and their kids just don't have as many opportunities, so I think that that sort of connectivity throughout school day is great, and like getting to the, like the B teams, I know that I had heard the same thing, that there was maybe a little bit of pushback there as far as doing that, and you know, seeing that firsthand and seeing the progress these kids are making, they're part of a team, and by the way, it's not, you know, to me, a lot of these athletes do have the potential to keep playing at the next level, right, it's not maybe just, you know, like a rec league, there are some, certainly some, some athletes there.
They're already moving, aren't they?
Yeah, they have a chance to really continue on if they stick with it, so it's nice that they you know, have that opportunity, whereas before, you know, who knows, they may have stepped away and never come back to it, so.
Yeah, I mean, before, they were actually not provided with the opportunity because of resources and structures that we had, and then, yeah, and it was whether or not they continued on their own and tried, or so this a little bit of, a little bit of side story.
Yeah, it's, it's kids that go to Conan, it's students that attend private schools, it's homeschool students, it really is.
On the teams?
A mix, yeah.
Is that the coolest thing ever? We were talking about that just the other day, looking at the team, and I was like, look at the mix of students that are out there, like it's not, it's not just Conan kids, I mean, it's our, our district kids, but they're everywhere.
Yeah, they are from, oh, I was just gonna say, along with your comment about that they can keep on playing, you know, should they choose and work at it, right, and get the support needed to be able to do that and reach their goals. While we did not win that game with a score, what we did win was the amount of energy that we put in and I just watched at least two or three different kids on multiple occasions as the ball was going out, just rolling their body over there, grabbing that ball and saving it to come on in. It was, it was really, it was really fun and neat to see that, sometimes they got the ball, sometimes they didn't, but just the extra effort is really fun to see.
Sounds.
Right. Great comments. So Ruben, with that, I just wanted to mention that, want to congratulate you and the Civil Journal as well, getting this.
Yep, and Leslie Help as well, yep, we've been working on it, get it out, yep. So it was the purpose of, of this, obviously, we have some, we'll be working on some that have more to do with the budget. This does have to do with the budget, you'll notice that the topics of these are ones that we've had as conversations within our budget meetings as the priorities. And so we'll just start to get figures and so forth along with these, but it's also neat to see that we have a lot of innovation going on at various levels of the district. So some things have been in place for a little while, other things are just beginning.
Well, that is a commitment that we've made to the community to try to put these out regularly and keep them informed, and this certainly is keeping that commitment, so. Thanks for your involvement. And with all the things going on that are, you know, big changes, it's important. Of course, we don't know how the CTE is gonna go, but we don't want it to be a surprise to anyone. Could be huge. Okay, so if there are no other questions for Ruben, then let's move on to our consent agenda. And I think we do have a few changes there. Ruben, do you want to just go through a little bit what the additions are to the consent agenda?
Sure, so what we're asking to do is add a couple of budget transfers this evening. Um, one for sixteen thousand two hundred eighty-five, and that's from repair and maintenance phone systems to online subscriptions, that's to make sure that we have the funds in the right place for our Otis bill that we, that we have. So we just need to move it from one line to another line. You know, what we had, we hadn't, we had added some extra technology with like Alma and some other, you know, frontline products and so forth to streamline all our systems, so we had the money to, to make sure that we have all this, but just in different lines, and so we're just adding that to make sure that we pay our Otis invoice.
So could I ask you then, just as long as you're discussing this, just for the record, just give us the very brief update on what Otis is and what it brings to our.
Sure, Otis, yeah, I mean, I'm not the best person to do that, because I don't use it day in and day out. But I was around during the selection time and some situations, sure, it's a learning management system. And so Alma is a student information system, so we're all, you keep all of the information for your students, demographics, grades, all of that. Although the report cards here actually come out of Otis because it works best for us with our standards-based approach, so all of our curriculum documents are in there and they, we report out there. It's similar to, if you take a college course, where you might, all colleges have learning management systems like Blackboard or Canvas or Brightworks or Brightspace, I mean, you know, those types of things, this is that as well. But it's K through twelve friendly, so it can be used for any grade level. But also, it's catered to elementary, middle, and high, to be able to hold in data from state testing, to be able to have some features in there where you can assess, has assessment tools in there that allow students to, you know, voice record, to be able to submit their answers in different ways. And it houses, it's a kind of a storage area for a lot of the assignments. Maybe some videos, so some instructional materials, and so the students can access that at any, anytime they have internet and can log in.
So if they have an assignment, but it's, it was given to them a while ago, they can go back and look at that.
Look at it, work on it, do it, ask questions, we've, yeah.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so.
And the other one is a transfer, for whatever reason, I'm not seeing that here.
Parker Arch transfer forty-five thousand?
It's a forty-five thousand dollar transfer from a JGS line that has the money in there to Barker Architects, that's to fund the rest of the amount that we have needed to pay, the total amount was sixty thousand, we've paid fifteen thousand already, and so we want to create the PO prior to, you know, paying it, before getting invoiced and so forth for the rest of it, since we're more or less, all, all but maybe like five thousand dollars used up pretty much with other services, I think that they're expecting to go back and forth with us and have some meetings with the Department of Ed next, and then after that, we go forward and we determine our next steps. So this is the first part of that work that we were doing with this company. Okay, yeah. That's what that's for.
Great. Thank you. And then
and the reason, just to be transparent, the reason for taking it out of another line is because when we went forward to, when we learned about this opportunity and we were gonna go forward, we had not budgeted for an architect for this purpose at this time. But we talked about it, we said, yes, something we want to do, and that we would find the funds to be able to do that.
And it's it's part of the flexibility that fortunately we have as a school district to move funds around within our approved budget to try and meet the actual needs, whether it's either things that become less expensive or more expensive or whatever. Okay, thank you. And then I guess the other thing that we probably want to do is move the meeting minutes out of the consent agenda, I'm sure we don't have everybody having been here for all of these all these meetings.
Oh my gosh, I don't know which ones I'm here for.
Yeah, so, so we'll remove the, the meeting minutes, and then other than that, I think we're good to go, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Great, thank you.
I second that.
And thank you, Nathan. If there's no discussion.
I just had a quick question for Ruben, I saw that there were two like long-term subs on there, I think JGS kindergarten and middle school wellness teachers, so that's, that's the plan, I guess, to fill those positions for the rest of the year.
Yeah, actually, there's, there's gonna be three, so there'll be another one as well. So kindergarten
Yeah, I just remember.
Has had four, has had, this is the fourth individual, but this person's certified and is gonna be there for the rest of the year, has been in our was part, out of FPU, the FPU partnership, and has been in the school all year long, and has also been a long-term sub in some other classes. So that person's gonna be with kindergarten for the remainder of the year.
Super, she's my kindergartner.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're excited about that, to have some continuity. The person who, Brenda, who was there for a few weeks, did a wonderful job.
She was great.
She was great, yeah, fantastic, and she's been a long-term employee of ours, working with early childhood and is also working on her certification as well. So this was a great opportunity for her, we do have some, you know, laws we have to abide by around certifications and so forth, so appreciate all the work that they've, we've done, and we'll have stability going forward and, and the administration there, I know that Deanna and Ashley in particular, the two of them, both have a great deal of experience in that area, and we'll work to make sure that the curriculum instruction is what it needs to be. Then the, yeah, we went with a long-term substitute here for wellness, we, that's what we were able to find, getting a full-time person right now in that area, when you have kind of a health and PE niche, it's, it's hard to find, so that's what we're doing. And then we were fortunate, mathematics at the eighth grade level, because we had a, an individual, a new teacher this year, decided that, that this was not the route for her. And we wish her luck as she goes, you know, well, as she goes to search for her next what she wants to do next. But we have an individual who has a science certification, lots of experience, and is coming in and is working with the eighth grade math and some of the Algebra I. I've been able to witness some of that from. I've been able to witness some of that from not inside the classroom, but from outside in the hallway to see. Um, I have a ma- math background. I was able to see what was going up on the board and it looked very accurate, which is good. And so, um, I'll be in and I know that the administration will be in to, uh, keep observing all of these, uh, long-term subs. And that's to not hire, it, it's hard halfway through the year to hire a permanent person.
Hey, well, thank you for that information and thanks for the question. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. And if there are, or any, if there are no other questions or comments, then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, very good. And that passes, uh, six, zero, seven. Okay. Let's go to the meeting minutes. Uh, the minutes for October sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three non-public minutes. I have a, a couple of small changes on that one. And, uh, like to bring forth, uh, there's a mention here of the need to discuss the superintendent's contact. It really, I, I think that meant to be contract. It's, it's a small
Scrubbers.
Question of one hour, right? And then, uh, I also noticed that the motion passed, like, the motion to adjourn should, should be five, zero, zero as opposed to six. Very minor, we'll keep it typed in.
We could also, on that one, probably get rid of the word further after future.
Yes, yes, that's right. Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion.
Oh, I think I need to rem- are you, are we approving all of them?
No, it's one at a time.
No, we're just going to do one at a time.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks. I'll make a motion to accept the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three non-public meeting minutes as amended.
Thank you, Christine.
I'll second.
And thank you, Kim. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, there was one abstention, so that passes five, zero, one. And then the, um, November sixth, twenty twenty-three non-public.
I'll make a motion to accept the November sixth, twenty twenty-three non-public meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Christine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, Nathan abstains. So that passes five, zero, one. And then November twentieth, twenty twenty-three non-public.
I make a motion to accept the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three non-public meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Chris, thank you. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye. I've seen it wasn't there.
Okay. Thank you. So that passes five, zero, one. And then December fourth.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for December fourth, twenty twenty-three in public.
I second that.
Okay, uh, thank you, Kim, and thank you, Nathan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
I abstained.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. So that passes five, zero, one. And then, um, the December fourth non-public.
I make a motion to accept the December fourth, twenty twenty-three non-public. Yeah, no, you're right. Non-public. I'll second.
Okay. That, thank you, Christine and Kim. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ab- abstained?
I have to abstain.
Yeah, so you bet the eighteen.
Yeah, yeah.
So again, that passes five, zero, one. And then last.
That got me first.
Uh, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three non-public.
I can make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three non-public.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
I'll second.
And thank you, Christine. Okay, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abst- uh, abstained? Okay, that one passes six, zero, zero. Great, thank you. All right. And now we're on to our action items. And we have the finalization of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five warrant articles.
So we had a meeting with the finance committee just to talk about, to really just talk about the other warrant articles apart from the two main ones and, um, these articles and the language that's in there reflects the conversation that was there. Working backwards, Article six that does not exist, doesn't exist because we're suggesting not to put a warrant article for, to put money into the, um, trust fund or facilities at this point in time. Um, not without a very specific purpose of that, and we still have some funds in there. Those funds, uh, to be used for, you know, the purposes of renovation or reconstruction, things of that nature. Uh, we have some items that are already on the docket to be done. There is some money. There's about, you know, half a million or so in there right now. That will be refused because of some current work that's happening. But we, um, have some, uh, architectural work that needs to be done, you know, next year, just to kind of give you a heads up on that one as we go forward. And also, um, safety of locks and doors and windows, which we've talked about. Um, continuing on, we've done some of that this year. We need to continue to do that. But without having something very specific and firm, um, and due to an increase in the budget plus a, uh, half a million dollar warrant article for the teacher's contract. The finance committee did not want to go forward with anything new. Um, and did not choose to want to take out of anything that would be, um, in, you know, at, left afterwards after the school year. And then Article five, uh, did make it in there, uh, just as we, um, al- always have some vulnerability, perhaps more than any other area in the area of special education, is to put fifty thousand dollars into that contingency fund. I believe that gets us up to that half million mark. Um, which is what we've been trying to get to. So, uh, this, however, is to raise an appropriate sum. So you'll see that there would be a tax uh, impact, an estimated tax impact on that. That's different than some years. Some years it is taken up, actually most years, maybe all, that since I've been here, we've taken out of excess afterwards, anything that has been left over at the end of the year. Um, but the board, again, just reminder, the board, the board has the opportunity to carry over five percent of a specific amount of money to, you know, the year. Right now we have in our unassigned um, fund balance retention, like a few dollars over a million, basically, is what you were able to retain last year or into this year. Article four is just saying that if Article three doesn't pass, we can go back to, uh, bring something back to the the voters. Number three, we've talked about a little more at length in our last meeting. If anyone has any questions, I'd be certain, uh, you know, we can definitely talk about that at length. And then number two is, are the numbers that we decided on last time. Um, the first number that proposed is thirty-one, seven, seventy-three, five, forty-three, which is about a three point three percent increase. And I think that the thirty-one, nine, the default budget is about a three point seven percent increase is what I, I think those are the numbers I recall. Um, and then the first article has to do with elections. So we have some positions open. And of course, everyone here is going to read, you know, Ron again.
Well, so mine's the one year. So mine's, my position I'm holding right now is currently the one year, and then it goes to again, just to fit in where it normally fits, right? That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, so you're, you're completing the second year.
Yeah, till the next election.
Yep, and so you could, I suppose technically you could go for either role, but so, so, okay, so, so if, for instance, you know, Christine said, I think I'd like to do another year, but I don't want to do three, you know, maybe I'll go for that one and vice versa, you know, that sort of thing. Um, but, uh, the typical way is that the person coming in would go for the one.
It has to fit within that every three, so that they get one every election.
Yeah, that's correct.
Similar to the select.
And then Ringe. And I think Lisa.
Oh, Lisa's that?
Yeah.
And then there's the second chapter. When is that?
The, that's you.
So, yeah, so Daisy's position, that's, you know.
Is the one year, is the one year.
And so she's still, uh, Nathan's filling out the last one, yeah, and Christine.
Lisa and Christine.
Yeah. Uh, I do have Carrie, I believe, on line to answer any questions that you might have. That I can, perhaps best answer.
One, one question I'd like to ask is, you, you said that there was, uh, a healthy balance in the building maintenance trust fund at the moment, but there are several expenditures that are already planned.
We are, I think we still have another payment that we need to make on the system that was put into the construction trades building. So there's not, not an higher amount of ventilation and yeah, there's two, two parts of the system. So airflow and, yeah, venting, the, the dust collection, dust collection aspect of it.
So what, what would the balance in that fund be after obligations have been met?
So from recollection, and if Carrie's online and she has this information, I'm not sure she has it at her fingertips or not. So I don't want to put her on the spot if she does not have that. But I believe we'd be at around three hundred thousand, a little bit more than that.
Okay.
You should be able to speak at this point, Carrie.
Okay, yes, I, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. Um, we did talk about it at the finance committee meeting. Uh, we have five hundred fifty-six thousand right now, but there were several pending payments. I want to say it was around two hundred and somewhat thousand that we still had pending to come out between, um, payments we still had to make and uh, additional work that still was left to do, so.
Okay, so that's, that sounds, so three hundred thousand was the number. So that puts, probably puts us around three hundred thousand afterwards, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so we had.
Yeah, so, so I guess the question I would ask is, is that amount adequate, given our recent history of of, of needs in that, uh, that area? And, and I ask it in part because it seemed to be, and I'm thinking of the, uh, Jeffrey Selectman in particular, their questioning of whether we're, you know, putting aside money for those kinds of facility needs. I mean, certainly if, if something comes up that is an emergency need, we're going to have to find a way to fund it and there's always, uh, budget transfers or, or under. I, I guess primarily would be a budget transfer, right, to address an emergency. But in terms of what we're planning for, this three hundred thousand should cover us for the
I think, I think we'll be fine, um, with that. I mean, it's, it's always nice to have more in there. I understand the reasoning for not putting it forward. Um, because of, uh, really Articles one, uh, two and three. And wanting to keep fewer articles on there and make sure that um, we're asking for what we think it are, is most essential. And since there isn't a firm plan for how that was going to be used, that was the idea of not putting more in. Um, certainly, I mean, obviously it would be good to put money in there on a, um, regular basis and to continue to doing that. But would we also, if we were going to do it, I would, I would, I mean, and this is not the finance. My suggestion at the finance committee was to put some money in there if we had m- money left over. Um, not to raise an appropriate new funds. That being said, there was some conversation around that and it was determined by the, the group, um, board members present that that is, is not necessarily the best way to go.
We're still concerned about passing the Articles two and three. And so we don't want to put a whole bunch of other Articles out there that's going to
What, what was the reasoning behind? I know it's small, but why the different tact on the fifty thousand dollar for special education?
Because we spent a lot of time explaining the issues and costs of special education. And we have, I believe, we have almost four hundred K in it.
Four, four fifty-two, yep.
Yeah, so the extra fifty would get us to the point where we can cover, you know, one, one placement.
Yeah, but I know, but I guess, wh- why the, why the decision to, to raise an award article versus apply it at the end of the year like we decided to maybe for facilities? I mean, we're saying, if we're concerned about the other ones passing, we all want to have these other warrant articles on there. Why the?
I think it's that we have a demonstrated need in, in special ed. I mean, it's every year it goes up. We can anticipate it going up again. And we don't want to get in a situation where we suddenly end up with a uh, extra out of district student that we hadn't accounted for, then, um, we could really end up in a bad situation financially.
Yeah, I get it. I just, I don't understand why we would raise it in a warrant article versus just assign it at the end of the year like we just said we do for the other ones. It would have to be a warrant article regardless. It just is where the money is, is going to come. Is it, is it additional to raise the following, so the following school year or the, uh, for the following school year, or is it to be taken out of this year's?
Yeah, I understand your question.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
The answer is that we want to put as little as possible, uh, into a, um, warrant article that takes things out of what we have left at the end of the year, because we want to use that to make the decision on how much we want to, uh, keep in our, uh, unassigned fund.
Yep.
Okay, and how much we're going to give back to the town?
Because that was also tied, that conversation was tied to the next conversation we're having with wanting to make sure that if we have funds left over, that it would be, we'd be able to, in a sense, reimburse and maintain, um, going forward, the fund balance um, at the highest level possible for a purpose of emergencies or things like that. And if we do, which, if we have a facilities emergency, for instance, you know, that is all, those are also funds that could be utilized and that, those are also funds we have utilized for those sorts of things in the past.
So if five doesn't pass, like what he was saying, will it then be, is it something that will be bumped to the end of the year? So if five doesn't pass, like what he's saying, will it then be, is it something that will be bumped to the end of the year?
No.
It would just not pass.
Just means that we would have to cover any. Um, extraordinary. Student services expenses are in question.
Okay.
But if we have it in the. Sign balance, we've we've got something to learn.
Then, oh, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Well, you know, I'd just like to, uh. Thank the facilities, sorry, the uh, finance committee for its work. And. You know, acknowledge this is, in a way, one of the. The trickiest, but also the most important responsibilities of a school board. To look at the needs of the community and what issues, concerns of the taxpayers. But we're also trying to adequately fund our schools and keep ourselves moving forward, so. I appreciate all the effort that people have put in to try and understand these issues, but especially the finance committee.
Another side, it wasn't, it wasn't a long conversation, but it was a short conversation about. The the fact that, um, we, you know, to be sensitive to. Um, with regard to article number two, with the fact that one town here would be seeing. You know. A. Maybe thirteen or twenty five cent on the thousand increase while the other one would be during that same article. Um, being one nineteen to one twenty eight, you know, around there, and that's about what that's, you know, twenty percent. You know, one's twenty percent of the other one, um, so there's five, five times the difference. Um, there, and there's, you know, rationale for that, why that's the case, and it's actually the flip of what just happened uh, over the last two years. Um, which was the flip of what happened, you know, prior to last. Probably decade, but um, we did have the trends on that going back and forth, and it's the conversation of why we had, you know, a withdrawal study. Um, you know, having to do with the funding formula. Which. Takes into consideration value with valuation. Yeah, what is the case this year is that the fact that. You know, and I still would like to see the numbers, you know, at some point, I just, I know I sent that emails, maybe a report meeting and eventually as part of this process. But looking at that, my assumption is that the valuation of range has outpaced. It went up. That of Jaffrey, so we're paying, so when we kind of recalculate. And.
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 And. We got. State aid.
State aid.
Um. And COVID. For the students that didn't show up, all right, so there was about a hundred students in range.
Yeah, twenty fifteen, yeah. So the state.
Then we got adequacy aid for two years. And now it's gone.
Okay.
So they benefited, Grinch benefited from that extra adequacy aid for two years.
Right.
In terms of their tax rates being low, but now. Two things happened, all right, one is the adequacy aid is gone. And number two, um, uh, the budget is. High, I mean, it's not, you know.
Yeah, the budget's higher. So. Well, also, relative to the funding formula. More kids are coming back. So that there is getting closer. To. So the enrollment between the towns, so ranges, ranges percentage has gone up both in enrollment and. Yes. So that's why we see, because I look at this and it seems like even if we had a flat budget. Range's tax rate would.
Yes.
Would go up because we're just funding, you know, I like to do it like. You know, we need, we're responsible for twenty million and get split between the towns, and if you have a gap in aid, a gap, and then the funding formula. Both swung in Rangers direction, it seems like, that's why you end up with. And the thirteen cents increase for Jaffrey and a dollar nineteen for range, so I think as we're going through all this, I was assuming. Incorrectly, obviously, that somewhat more equitable, uh. But it is what it is, I'm very familiar. Well, it's equitable over. A period of time, perhaps. Yeah. Perhaps, and by time in years. You're readjusting every year. As things happen, but there's another. There's another piece to it, and so Charlie was going to say, well, you know, there's a third element as well.
Well, it's a third element, exactly what you said, using property values.
Yeah. Well, and also that. Uh, Jaffrey would get more. State aid. Yeah, so the gap in state aid. Yeah. Uh, which is all Jaffrey has always had. More state aid, but that gap probably grow now that. Range. That that we have less the COVID aid, or I don't know what the reason is, but it sounds like all three factors that go into the formula. Kind of. Tipped the other way. Tipped the other way this year. Yes. And I think that'll be important as we go through this process to explain that, because it looks right, like. Like, I think, I know that we've proposed a very fair and reasonable budget, right? But if you're going to look at the tax bill, it may not look that way. Yeah. Um, you know, it's going to look, it's going to be a significant increase, especially with these two, so I think it's just very important that we kind of get that message out. It is what it is, right? There would be nothing to hide as far as like. Here's how we calculate the formula, you know. Rangers enrollment went up. Rangers valuation went up. Our state aid went down, and this is why we're in the red. Of course, that's probably going to raise that whole conversation again, but I mean. It's a fair, it's a fair conversation to have, and uh, I think I'd rather be having. That conversation than, you know. The fact that we, you know, were irresponsibly funding the schools, because I don't think that's the case, I think the. But anyways, yeah, I'm definitely interested in those numbers, and I think we should make that. Available, right, because I think the perception is that. Range doesn't send their kids to the public schools, right, well. There are several people in rooms that don't. Right, right, there are, but as far as like, we need the data, right, the enrollment data that shows our percentage actually has gone up, if that's the case. It's something that people should know. Yeah, I mean, I think open house this year at Range Memorial, that was the largest group of people I'd seen in the nine years I've been here.
But again, Memorial has always been. Right, yeah.
But I mean, I don't think that's known, I think that, you know, maybe. There's a large contingent out that people aren't sending their. Oh, sure. Suits to the schools, certainly, but facts are facts, right? Yeah.
Same emotion, John. Yes, but, um, yes, so we're taking motion on the. All five of the, uh.
We can take them individually, or, um, if you, if you. It's okay, I believe, to take them all at once, if you want to pass it all the way through. But if there's differences on different ones, it's, you know, which I don't hear there being a lot of. Conversation on differences on either.
Right, so does the board, what's the pleasure of the board? Shall we do them all together, or would you like to do them individually?
I'm finally doing it all together.
Okay, yeah, that's good, so then, take a, how about a motion then?
Promotion to accept the finalization of the twenty twenty four, twenty five warrant articles, one, two, three, four, and five. Um, as written.
Yeah, no, that's. Sounds good, Nathan.
One second.
Okay. And thank you, Christine, and thank you, Nathan. And then just, uh. Are there any questions or comments before we vote? Well, then, I would just like to offer one very brief comment based on listening to the discussion, it's. It is always challenging to understand how these numbers. Come. And go, let's say, how they, how they flip flop. I I believe it was. Two years ago that we were looking at the Jaffrey. Tax rate, it was in danger of going up around five dollars, and I think thanks to some changes we made, and we got it down a little bit lower than that, but it was still in the fours, if I recall correctly. It's very high, and now we're seeing sort of the reverse of. And and the questions that keep coming up, well, what, how does this happen? Uh, I've heard one of the range selectmen who's on the budget advisory committee ask that question over and over again. You know, the reason it's hard to get the answers because it's it's complex. It may not be rocket science, but sometimes it's almost like it. Uh, one of the things I heard tonight, I just want to reinforce, because I didn't, I had forgotten this. But the fact that the adequacy aid that was being supported by the state. During the pandemic. For students who had, you know, decided to not attend the school. That was a big help. And with that expiring, which in these things do expire, that. Has made a significant difference. That was something I had forgotten, so it's on my list now to. Help answer that question. Along with the other three items. Valuations and. ADM, something. Okay, so then. All those in favor of the motion to approve the warrant? As written? Be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And no abstentions, yes, okay. I just have, um, um. One comment on article. Two is it? No, one.
One is the moderator.
And that is, Nathan, you can run for three years or you can run for one.
Yeah, that's.
No, you're not locked.
Giving her trouble.
Couldn't work this out.
Yeah.
Okay, well, great. So that takes care of. Action item. Number seven. And then. Item number eight is the discussion. Relating to the utilization of the unassigned fund balance.
All right, so this discussion, I mean, this is nothing you haven't. Heard or seen before, although the numbers are a little bit different, and in fact are actually a little bit lower. Um, due to Mike was able to get more up to date quotes.
Okay.
Um. If we, if we could purchase in the next forty eight hours, we could even lower that even more, but that's. That's, uh, he did not give me those specific quotes.
promo code?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so, um, the first three items are the items that we removed, sorry, four items or items were removed from. The technology lines, the Chromebooks, we talked, which that number really hasn't changed, um, the firewalls. Um. And then. The the at wireless access points and the three copiers, all of these. Uh, especially one, two, and three can be utilized, you know, right now. Um, and the Chromebooks, we can take a little bit longer to, you know, um, purchase those and for best pricing. Within that model, they do heaven flow. Um, and this price by no means is a bad price for them. So, uh, and then the tractor, um, out of the quotes we have, I mean, they're all the quotes range, they're all, they're fifty thousand, is is their. Basic range of what the tractors are that we're looking for. And then, uh, the one that still is, you know, I knew we wouldn't have an exact number for you, because it could be. This one right here, this is a quote from one of the companies for K through eight science of reading literacy curriculum, specifically, this is. The one for, um, written wisdom. There's also another one for core knowledge, I believe it is, uh, the committee that's working on this, uh, which now is is including the middle school as well. Um, is. Uh, going on visits to look at some of this curriculum in action, the instruction in action, and how the pacing and the processes are. Um, as early as the end of this week, early next week, uh, for one of them, um, and then to go see the other ones, but they. I would, I would expect that this would be a not to exceed type of number, the other one is about twenty five thousand dollars less than this if you wanted with that. That rule. Um. So those are the numbers. Right around there totally, I think I added that up properly, someone can check that, because I. Was using a calculator on my computer. Um, but three hundred thirty seven thousand nine hundred eighty, basically, three hundred forty, three hundred forty five thousand. Um, my idea would be, you know. We can do a not to exceed, we don't have to have the exact, and we we are not going to have the invoices for these items, these are still all quotes. Um, to go forward, have a public hearing and say, you know, we we have a not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand, if you want to round it that way, but that's, that's, that's just an idea. Three hundred fifty thousand for the purpose of purchasing these. Either three categories, technology. Um, building the grounds, equipment, and then K through eight. Uh, literacy curriculum. Again, which is something that we're not going to revisit for another five to seven years. Um, after this purchase, it's a big, it's a major purpose purchase. Um, but would guarantee continuity of materials and scope and sequences, in in general, scope and sequences that can be altered, of course. Um, from K through H, we do know that. One of the top two. Uh, indicators of students being successful in school and beyond after school, um, is reading by third grade. There's some numeracy research out there as well, but. This is the one that's tried and true. And so we want to make sure that we can. Um, get those results in a different place of this tie up, you know, coupled. With the work that we're doing this year with the Ames Web and the progress monitoring and all of that, and the P L C work that's happening at the at the elementary schools in particular. Um, but also at the middle school and the intervention processes. Gives them the tools and the the resources they need in order to, um, I think intensify things significantly.
So with this, another discussion last time was, um. Having a public hearing just to get feedback from. Um, the public. Um, and then this, the board, um, can decide, um, because from that. Is it mandatory to have the public hearing? It's more for me understanding.
Well, this, you would have to have a public hearing to utilize the funds that I'm requesting for you to use, so it's the unassigned fund balance retention. Um. Is the million plus, you know, again, like, you know, thirty dollars or whatever it is, or or three hundred dollars. Um. The. So that we have to be. Transparent with how money is being used, and so. A hearing, a public hearing is something that the board can say, we intend to do this, this is what we're doing, we're notifying you of this, you can receive. Public. Feedback, and you can change your mind and say, you know what, that's some good points, I don't think we want to do. X, Y, or Z, or maybe we want to do part of this or something like that, or maybe, ooh, you know what, you brought up another point, I think I'd like to. Spend another three hundred thousand dollars on top of that, um, to get, you know, something for another, you know, for. After school curriculum or something to that, I don't know, um. But. I I I think it would be good to have an intent. And to put forward, this is what we intend to do, and to have a. Idea of. The dollar amount. And what not to exceed.
No, that makes sense, and, um.
And if, you know, there was a statement that was made before when someone said no means no, that's not what a public hearing is about, that would be a vote if we were in like a a different type of scenario.
Yeah, I get that, um, for what is the, what was the question? Yeah, what would the timeline look like right now, and to compare it to?
Yeah.
All the other budget things we got to do.
Sure. So we have the budget hearing. This Thursday.
Yeah.
The purpose of the budget hearing is for us to present everything we've already presented, so the articles right here, and then to discuss what the articles, what's in, what it means.
Yeah.
And then to get feedback from the public that is in attendance. And then the board can choose to take some of that feedback if it wants to. The board's finalizing basically things at that point in time. We could still put some of this in the budget if we chose. Yeah. You, you could, I mean, on at a deliberative session in. Which is the second session, considering the the first session, um, but a deliberate session in February. The public. Can change the numbers.
Yeah.
As a voting body. Um, they could increase, they could decrease, you know, those sorts of things, as long as they don't change the intent, they can't, they can never change the intent of the article, um, and not allowed to do that. So.
Um, so if we agree on, you know, to move forward with this, how much time do we have to give? Before that?
You gotta, you gotta at least give, I believe, an entire week.
At least a week.
Of information, I would recommend more. I think that because. I think it's a good idea to have a. To be further along in the process of the K through eight science of reading, um, work that they're doing. Um, because if if they do choose to go with, say. One that is a hundred twenty five thousand as opposed to a hundred seventy thousand. You might like to. Have that information, um. If if it's not going to be there at that point in time, I would say the earliest you'd want to do this would be at the next. You know, board meeting timeframe, which would be two weeks from now. Um, you could. You can wait four weeks if you wanted to. But we would need enough time, that would give us enough time to post it and. Say there's a public hearing and. And all of that. You could do it, you could do it, you don't have to do it at a board meeting, you can do it at another time as well, three weeks if you wanted to. You could do it, you could do it, you don't have to do it at a board meeting, you can do it another time as well, three weeks if you wanted to.
Are we going to able to acquire all that stuff up there that you wait for?
But we, I think one, two, three, four, and five are firm. As firm as we're going to be able to get them, I have the documents right here, I have the documents for the reading ones as well, and they're pretty specific.
You're talking about timeline. Acquire them and get them on board before the end of the year.
Oh, yes, yes. That, yeah. I believe, um. All of that's in stock and the and the reading will not be a problem because they're this. That one, this is a. Yeah. Well, companies always have their stuff.
Yeah, I guess my only further thought on this since last time is, I think. Not doing the Chromebooks would be a mistake, I think, I think that would, you know, that would be the thing I'd. Be most in support of, and then certainly in keeping to me with the theme of like closer to the students and. Um, you know, the science and. Science of reading literacy curriculum would also be. You know, a priority, I look at those two things as, at least for me. The things we should definitely either be doing this way or finding a way into this year's budget or next year's budget, you know. A few different ways to do it and.
And I think the wireless access points, if I remember correctly, um. Those are actually necessary for the testing, right? I think that's what Tom said, that. The. Something was not up to date enough at our mass.
We need more coverage. We need, we need better coverage, yeah, some, and then some of them just need to be replaced.
Aren't the firewalls for the breach that?
The firewalls are for safety, yeah, and so they.
But in terms of like direct impact on students, that was like a, the. Ability to conduct us.
Yeah, I remember when that happened.
And that's not the first time that's happened to us, well, when we've had Chromebooks out of date. Yeah, right, because of the the default budget, we weren't able to replace Chromebooks, and then suddenly we weren't able to. Conduct our testing as we normally would.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was an experiment, something that we didn't anticipate, we, the, you know, machines continued to work, we knew that they had another, you know. Year or two of their life, it just, we never anticipated that it wouldn't be compatible.
Right.
Yeah.
So if I remember correctly. My, maybe too good. Um, we. Took money out of. We had public hearing, which is money out of the, uh, set aside money out of the. Um. Unassigned reserve fund. And then before the end of the year, we had a budget transfer to transfer that money back again. Because we had enough of the surplus at the end of the year to cover those items. So my guess is that of this three hundred and thirty seven, three hundred thirty eight K. A big chunk of that is gonna be available, whether we do it or not, a big chunk of it's gonna be available to. Uh, put back in the. Um, unassigned fund. My guess, knowing Kerry.
If, if patterns stay as they have over many years, Charlie's correct. Um. The, the purpose for doing these now is because it's important to. Get these materials that we can use now, now and not. Not do it in a way that isn't going to be used this year, because you're using this year's funds. And all of these. Easily, I mean, it's really smart to get the number six, the materials. Early on to pilot, to do multiple, you know, various types of pilots. Uh, whether they be book studies, whether they be individual groups, teams trying certain parts of the lessons. Whether it's just them reading and going through and getting familiarizing, you know, familiarizing themselves with that curriculum. Um, and also it will dictate to us how we use some of our Title II funds in the future for professional development. We do have a lot of teachers right now, um, at the elementary and at the middle level right now, uh, doing the letters training throughout the state, which is. You know, which, which is, I think, a three credit course, basically, is what it is. Um, I've done the letters training in the past, in another district, we have, um, brought in some trainers, it's, it's very good. It's, um. They're certainly going to learn a lot.
So John, I wouldn't have any problem asking the public. Also, I want to add a question on restorative classroom.
Sure.
Uh, is that, are we still gonna have that?
Yeah. Yeah, so the, um, what we did was we made sure that the. And we're not only, it depends what, depends what you're asking. Um, so yes, we're going to continue to have the restorative classroom that we have this year. In the budget default or the proposed budget. We have it in there so that the expansion of that, so it covers almost all of elementary school. Um, I think maybe not, maybe not kindergarten, I think it's like fir- first through fifth, and maybe, maybe this does get UK through five. Um, you're gonna have that ability to work with those learners over that period of time and not just have, you know, enough sending them away. So you'll, it's the expansion of the restorative classroom, yes, that's in there. Um, what we have also done already is Kerry and I had sat down and found, um. Kind of lesser cost items. That were asked for mostly at the elementary level around. The work that they're doing with M T S S B, some curriculum around that area, they had done some pilots and had wanted to finish. You know, acquiring the curriculum, that. As well as some STEM curriculum, um, some furniture and fixtures, uh, in in some areas. Um. Things like that, they're going ahead and purchasing those now, so we had taken that out of next year's budget as well. It was under fifty thousand total for all of that. But those are like multiple items, small items, these are bigger. More tangible.
Thinking of next year's budget.
Yeah.
I would like us to find fifty four K someplace in there. On the permanent sub at RMS JGS. That was ranked number high, it was very high than the needs of, of Dan and, um. Just proved like.
Nikki, Nikki and yeah.
Nikki, yeah. And and so I don't want to see them go away. I still remember when I had principals teaching because we didn't have the subs, so. That's important to me.
Okay.
Yeah, for this, I think we all can agree.
Something. First, so. Um, let's tell her fifty four K, which I think is. Something we should be able to find.
Yeah, they're valuable at the middle high school as well, they they are. Yeah, okay. Yep, good thought.
I think we can all agree that we want to. Move forward with, um, bringing this up to the public, I guess we gotta get a date down, figure out when to do it. So is this something we could, we'd, it would be better on its own day? Or can we add it on to the twenty seconds? Make it a longer day, unfortunately, but what would be better?
Well, I don't think that this hearing has to take all that long, it could be ten minutes.
Typically, they're fairly sure.
They're very short, I would put it at the beginning before a board meeting. You're already here.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, people come, it's really your. Um. So is. Juno is the next one in fourteen days, is it the twenty second?
Yes.
Yeah, what we could go is as early as the twenty second.
So then is it the desire of the board to?
And and does that give us enough time to advertise the way we need to?
Is it, um, seven days or fourteen days?
I believe it's seven.
Yeah, if it's seven, it's enough. If I get an answer tonight, I can give it in the paper by Thursday.
Okay.
So, but you wanted to wait until you had a better number for it?
Or, or if you wanted, it's up to you, I'm fine with this, because I don't think it's gonna, it won't be, that's what, if you want to do with a not to exceed.
Okay.
Yeah, then this is fine, um, this is the highest estimate we have.
Alright.
Well, would somebody like?
The motion, yeah, I'll motion to, um. Set the date of, um, or add, um. Um, the. A public meeting.
Call hearing, yep.
Yeah, the public hearing, sorry, public hearing, um, to present, um. The board, um, intention of using. Um, unassigned funds for what is written up here for technology tractor and curriculum. Um, on January twenty seconds.
Thank you, Nathan.
Well, seconded.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Uh, any discussion? And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained. Okay, so that passes six zero. Alright, people are gonna have to add some more. Agenda topics, it's kind of early, isn't it, to be this far along?
That early, come on now.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. Let's move on to board committee updates. And I guess I'll just ask of our. Various, uh, board committees, anyone who, any committee who has met and and has, you know, additional information to share.
I don't have any updates, but, um, I'm not sure, it looks like we usually meet. For education, sorry, we usually meet the second Thursday, which is gonna fall on the eleventh, which. We have a meeting, so I don't think we're gonna be doing that. And then I would assume the next one's gonna be the eighth, unless I get a different update from David Bo. So that's all I have on education.
Okay. So typically we would meet on the eleventh, but so far that hasn't been notified.
Well, right, because we have, do we have a meeting?
We have the budget.
We have the budget.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, I was like, I think there's a meeting on that night, yeah. Okay.
I mean, there would be a large enough gap where we could theoretically hold both, because I'd be setting up the room anyway. Uh, if it wasn't something that we would hold, we'd just set it all up, be ready to go, do the first one, then do the second one.
Oh, that's a great thought. Four thirty ten. Yeah. Well, I don't know, we'll see. Maybe David won't like that idea.
Alright, um. Facilities committee has not met since last time, however, we have changed the date of our. Uh, meeting for this month from the fifteenth to the twenty second, which is more in keeping with our. Normal thing of having it the same day as our second board meeting. Um, how, however. It was brought to my attention at the beginning of the meeting that there is one facilities item that, uh. Sandy might be interested in broaching. And if, in in considering and discussing it before the meeting. It seems like it might be something that we should at least broach, because it is, I think, a discussion that affects the public. It has to do with security and how we allow the access of the public to the building when that's necessary. Without compromising security. Well, Sandy, would you like to speak to that or?
Yes, um, so one of the concerns is, um, can you pull that policy of? Do you still have it? There's a policy that states. Uh, the wording is a little bit strange, and that's where we're having some, basically, you can, uh, how the principals are. Um, interpreting the policy, I have one principal that, um. Has decided that we are going to remove the access for the county recreation. Or the town recreation departments because of the way the policy is written, and then I've got the other two principals. Who don't have a problem with the way the policy is written. Um, so I think it just needs some clarity, I don't really care either way, um, as to whether, um.
Do you know which one it is?
Uh, or, um, yes, so. I'm sorry, I can't see it all. Um. Talking about like after hours, right now, our town rec departments have key fobs. Um, but it says that only, um, personnel are supposed to have key fobs. So the principal of the, you know, David Dustin has decided that he does not want the rec departments. Have fobs because they're not vetted. Folks, you know, they're not personnel, they are not somebody that's gone through what we have to go through to get our key fobs.
Okay.
Um, so what that means and what is said in some part of, of one of the policies is that. A custodian is to be provided for after hours. Uh, activities, so during the week, Monday through Friday, not a big deal, so I've got coverage from six AM to ten PM, but we have a lot of weekend stuff.
Right.
Um, so we have a lot of games, um, like this past weekend was an issue, I had one game here at the Pratt. Um, with Jaffray, uh, rec department, and then. I had things going on with the Ringe Rec Department at both, um, RMS and at JGS. I made the decision at the time because those two principals were okay with the rec departments having the key fobs, they've had them. Previously, but do arm and disarm the buildings, we have not had issues that I'm aware of that brought to my attention. Um, so I allowed those two to do their thing, and I provided a custodian for here.
Good, okay, so, th- thank you for that update, and that, uh, you may have more that you need to add, but we can see. You know, the, the, the issue, and it seems like it's an issue that's important on both sides, we want the community to have access. We also want to assure security of our students and our facilities, so it's it's something that we have to work through and. It's not only to address these current issues, but going forward, we know we have an interest in using these buildings and. Uh, certainly if the C T E program goes forward, we'll have an interest to, uh, use those facilities too, so this is. Perhaps a good time to try and sort those issues out.
The, yeah, and the other issue is the conversation or the interpretation that is between exterior doors. Shall be closed and locked at all times. Which, okay, makes sense, and then the next line says, a building being used by an authorized school or community group in the evening or. On a non-school days shall be opened for such activity and secured again after its conclusion. So with a little bit of possibility of, oh, do we then, we have it unsecured during that timeframe? Or, because with this lock at all times, it's kind of secured, I suppose, unless you're talking about the alarming of it.
No, I read that.
So there's a little bit of a contradiction that can be interpreted, and it is, and it is interpreted differently by different people, so.
And the propping of the exterior doors are not allowed, so they even may be like, well, Doc can't do anything.
Although we have to do it during school board meetings.
But, exactly, so, all of that, I mean, we've lived with it a little while, we now have seen what. Has transpires, and maybe we need to come back to look at the language of that to make the, make exactly what we were hoping for. Um, what this policy has done, I can say, is that it has raised our awareness and of the importance of making sure that our facilities are indeed. Secured, that we are making sure that people coming in through the front, we, you know, have them sign in and. And that we exit and have people sign out and so forth of all our facilities, and that the reason why the propping of the exterior doors in a lot of. Locations that that's, that was culturally, you know, yeah, it was fine to do that, obviously, there's evidence of, um. That very thing being a problem with, uh, school violence, um, and, uh. You know, even reminding people, you can remind people and, you know, people make a decision, having a policy is important, say, hey, no. Say, hey, no, it's not allowed, you can't do it, we don't do it, and so, um, that's important.
So Sandy, I saw you had your hand up to.
To, to bring up, you know, because you brought up the propping, we do with, with, the way we have our security system set up. We don't actually have to prop the doors, I can schedule the door to be unlocked for a time period.
Okay.
So right now, well, not now, because I saw you guys have a sign on the board, I could, on board nights. Have these doors unsecured, so your public can come in. When they come in, whether they're on time, or they're running a little bit late, where, but the problem is, way it said, you know, the way the policy reads. If the door's supposed to be monitored at the same time, so we don't have one of us out there monitoring it. Yeah, so the propping, we can get away, we can, propping is bad, but I can unlock the doors. But it's just, the, the policies are just ambiguous, and I would just like some clarity, I don't care either way how you do it, um, because. I'm new to the schools, as you guys know, um, so whatever is, um. Whatever is, is natural for a school system, I will, I'm happy to follow, but I've got. I, I'm in a position where we've got principals that aren't agreeing, so it kind of puts a bad spin. On why, why aren't we all on the same page?
And, and there may be different reasons in one school than another, but it's a, it's an opportunity for us to take a look at this. It's not only that we here in Jeffrey, we're interchanging, but the, the external environment is changing and.
Yeah.
We hope we're moving forward, so this is an opportunity.
I think it's.
Charlie, do you know why the rec department people can't be vetted? I mean, I.
That might be the.
For me to volunteer at RMS, I got your fingerprint, so.
Yeah, that might be the answer.
Yeah, there's no reason.
You aren't vetting every person who walks in.
And do you update that, that is so?
Right. I mean, that might be putting a burden on the.
But we don't wanna vet every person who walks in, because we don't want every person who walks in to have a fob.
Right, just the person that's responsible to run the program or whatever.
Yeah, who's responsible.
Yeah.
Sounds take responsibility for this, here's my thought.
Yeah.
It sounds like this might. Be an opportunity for that MOU process, right, to, to define it in there as well.
I think it's also a.
In the board would approve that, which would make the binding, right, so it said that they have one, or each rec department has. X amount of key fobs, yeah, could approve that, I don't know.
I think if there, there's a lot, though, going on in there, like. Doors shouldn't be propped or unlocked, they should be monitored, because. As soon as people, like, what we're trying to do is keep the school safe, and so soon as it's unlocked and. Let's say you've got somebody who's plotting something, they just know when to commit, like, that's a really hard. That's a hard black or white, I, 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 I mean, no matter what, if the doors are propped, somebody can get in. And hide and wait. I, I mean, I'm going extreme here, but I think that's why the policy says, there's, if the plate, the school's plastered with. Paper that says doors are to be locked at all times, because, because of stuff that we can't foresee, and because of the crazy stuff that's happening. In the world that we're trying to keep from happening.
The most problems are all after school, though.
So these are, so the.
That's gonna be my next thing, which it.
So it's not actually after school, it's, it's the issue with the weekends.
It's still a non-school day, so it should, should count in when being okay to leave it.
Because I have custodial here Monday and Friday, for the most part, even when the kids aren't here, we are here. Still providing our services.
Hey.
I have a question.
They are usually, actually.
We do.
Never get it.
Andy, we have these new. We got our safe brand, which allowed for some interior secured doors, some mag.
Maggots.
Okay. Could those be used, I'm not certain exactly where they are, but could those be used? For after-school events to shut off the rest of the school, they, they're not.
No, because what you're talking about is our containment.
Yeah.
System that's in place if we have an intruder, and it's just at the entrance, so. Typically, you've got your clubs that are, are in a variety of different classrooms in the, in the building. So the containment area is right there, it's, so your containment doors are these doors that you pass through. Here and at the cafeteria and at the top of the stairs, that's so if we have, we have a, a disgruntled parent or. Somebody that's causing an accident, you know, problem, we can hit that panic button, those doors close, and then you can't get you on that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think I, I kind of hear what you're saying, though, like, because in the past, I'm not, probably still happens, but there's usually, uh. Fence that used to go across.
Yeah, we've got those installed right now for the.
Basketball games, yeah.
And we are using those. But that, that, you know, that just splits the school. So it doesn't really, you know, like I'm saying, is the, the programs are scattered throughout.
Right.
Throughout the, uh, buildings, not just here, it's in the other buildings too, and for me to provide custodial, like, if, if I had followed. David's lead and the other principals had agreed that David's interpretation of how this policy is reading. I would have had to provide a custodian from seven forty five AM to eight fifteen PM on Saturday. And I'm sorry, I don't have somebody that's gonna work that many hours, and I, I'm lucky if I've got one or two people that are willing to work overtime anyway.
And the community doesn't want us to incur that kind of expense anyways, so.
Right, because, well, the other thing is, you know, we, because we provide, we, we are waiving their fees to using our facilities.
Right, right, so these are all good questions and, and, you know, concerns, and. It's an opportunity for us to look at them, put them all on the table, and see if we can come up with something.
I would appreciate that, thank you very much.
And just the final thing, because we do, you know, Sandy mentioned that, you know, principals have, uh, varying. Um, interpretations of this, as you can see, we've had a fairly long conversation of this because. Um, of the language that we have used here. Um, but the last line does say the building principal is responsible for enforcing this policy, so they take it very seriously.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't say the superintendent's responsible, if that were the case, you know. Yeah, we're all done, um, so, but that's, uh, that's a lot of responsibility, and I, um, I think, you know. It, it's a, it's a matter that concerns them, safety is the board's first priority, um, for a policy and also, you know, just. I mean, the right thing, so. They take it seriously.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for the discussion.
Thank you for allowing him.
Alright, so we've got a couple of committees then that have reported in, who else, or what other committees are there that have a need to? Um, report in tonight.
Finance committee had a brief meeting to discuss the Warren articles, as we've seen.
Right. Good, and we've seen the result of that, the recommendation go forward, so thank you. And, um. I, I think we might be ready for our second section of public comments.
Alrighty, um. Work on getting that policy back up. But again, same rules as last time, um, first name, last name, town of residence, before making a public comment. And, um, you can access, uh, the ability to speak by using the Henry's feature at the bottom of your screen. That's that, and I can acknowledge you.
Okay, great. You know, can, do you have a read of how many people are online at the moment?
Uh, we currently have five people, um, I think at the height of the meeting, we had, uh, eight or nine.
Okay. And, uh, if anybody does raise their hand in the next, uh. The next period, let, just let us know.
Mm-hmm.
And are there any board matters that anybody would like to bring forward?
No.
Okay, good. And I guess we'll be getting back together in just a few days. For our budget here.
That's here, right?
Think so, yeah.
It's just library.
Okay, and what, what time are we starting?
Six thirty.
Okay. Very good. Well, then, if there are no public comments coming forward at the moment, and no board matters, then we just need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Jim, thank you, if you have a second.
Second.
Christine, thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.